Suitable location for public, for safe public travel and reduce maintenance costs affecting those parcels. You got anything to add on this?
Actually, I think Greg Rivera will come up on his agenda.
Because it was hard to look at the maps on these things.
Yeah.
Small.
And I can identify it from these sideboards. And Bill's talked, come on up Greg.
Yeah.
And I'll just give them a quick briefer. Bill's talked about this before, there's a section, if you go past the prison, up over the Boffwood Summit, you come down before we make the right hand turn back up is Dubuque Valley there. Kerry Sprouse owns a piece of property there he's developing, there's a little, he's got a little pond he's building such. But there's a natural artisan wet spot, spring, right in the middle of the road that over the last twenty-five years or so, the road department has had whole vehicles, its own vehicles, its own graders out and it, and there's a, there's an ongoing cost to the road department, to the county, to, to service this road. And it's a major hazard because if you're going pretty quick and then you use it as swamp, it's not good. And the road is just all torn up right now. So, working with Kerry and Greg and Bill, they've developed an alternate road adjacent to that area where it goes, at that corner goes up and just over and around, a little higher, drier grounds. And then they'll also create a little right of way to connect to Gleason Creek Road that goes up and through that area there for the hunters and recreationalists, also county road, it's a minor road though. And so it's almost like a, a little land swap to make the passage for the public safer, lower maintenance costs over the lifetime. And also, I'm sure Kerry benefits a little bit as well by making his parcels probably a little more marketable because there's not, there's access to them that's appropriate and it's not a, a safety issue. So people will leave the roadway, drive across his property to get around the swampy area. And so this is the plan, you can see it better on the bigger maps, on what these roads and routes around look like. And we decided to do the vacation of those roads and establishment of a new right of way so that they would have to have the sense of surveying the actual existing road and doing that, a specific description deed swap. So Greg, did miss anything?
Oh, you did very good, thank you.
I tried.
Greg Rivera, Solace Landis, 1040 Mill Street. I do have larger exhibits if you need to see it. But our goal here is, with the record survey, I will file to vacate the entire roadways on the original map recorded April two thousand and five. We'll immediately follow up as soon as this map records along with the deed with an amended final map that relocates the roads and grants back to the county the sixty-foot required right of way that the, that the county standards require. So, but down, we have these spots on the bottom where everyone gets stuck. Well, the county actually created a road going across the upper part to get around that swamp. So they kind of trespass. So we're trying to fix that, so county is not in violation of any trespass laws.
And over time, the road department, especially when you get a little bit of moisture, they're going to make that new route a lot better. Because it, right now it's a little steep as it climbs over and comes down. So Bill has some plans and I think to make it a little bit more desirable. There'll also be new signage, explain the changes, signage, so people don't go straight through the road, so they know how to take the new road up and around. It'll be kind of reclaimed in that way. See, what am I forgetting?
Any of us that have traveled that road regularly, have been using the illegal bypass road for years?
Yeah.
I looked at property out that way that time before I moved where I am now. Approximately, the distance of the roadway?
Oh.
Just out of curiosity.
About a mile?
About three quarters of a mile, it is a mile. Yeah.
Hit that.
It started at the BLM property, cuts through the private property and then back into BLM. And it's about three quarters of a mile. It's actually shorter distance than what it's originally.
Yeah.
Yeah, where it runs up over the hill, it cuts out where that, that corner is. I, that, that corner's been a mess for a long time, a couple of years, it was last year, a few years ago, we had someone from the BLM ended up spending the night out there stuck in that trench.
So, when you're in that transition, it's for public or anybody?
Remember, it's not before the planning commission because we're dealing away county property and acquiring county property. So that's outside of their realm of authority. So that's only just worth to do that.
Okay. Anyone got any other questions on this? This was, this is the public hearing part of this?
It is public hearing, so.
Any comments on the public? Anybody on the phone got a comment on it? Okay, anybody in the building? George?
And looking at this, it's not color-coded, so I'm not sure which particular area you're talking about Greg.
Just put that in order Greg, it's okay.
Yeah.
How else could it be, George? Large map. That's the entire roadway granted on the original map in two thousand and five by Mr. Kerry Sprouse.
Okay.
And we're going to vacate every, all of that and relocate it.
Shane, you want to think of a route right up there? I would be delighted to do that.
I'm going to make sure I come back.
Stay off of the original road.
I'm not worried about the road.
See, the original road comes down and go in like this, you can see on that map. Now it's going to come up over the hill, this is where the existing bypass is.
Okay.
So this is being grant, on this map, is being granted back to the county. This one is the vacation and this one I thought is going to be re-dedicated back to the county.
Okay, I wish you would have color-coded it all the new, but, okay, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Anyone else got a comment for Mr. Rivera or anybody in the audience? This is public hearing, so speak your minds if you want. If not, we're going to go ahead and leave the public hearing and go to item two, which is, is that okay with the commission? Okay, we're going to go to item two. Discussion for possible action, the approval of the abandonment and total vacation of the full road easement right of way of that certain portion of County Road nineteen as identified in the attached parcel map, locally known as Boffwood Road, near the junction with Gleason Creek County Road, to include approval of a deed to Kerry Sprouse at Al of these county property right of ways in exchange for an adjac, for an adjacent commensurate alternate location designated public right of way, road easement, to be granted to the county in a more suitable location for safe public travel and reduce maintenance costs. Set abandonment vacation to effect and adjust these parcels APM number zero zero nine dash four eight zero dash zero one through APM zero zero nine dash four eight zero dash two nine pursuant to NRS four oh three point one seven oh.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Shane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you very much Greg.
Yeah.
But wait, we have another one for you. Item three on page three is discussion for possible action, the approval of a new parcel map and to accept a deed from Kerry Sprouse at Al onto the county of White Pine to include and for the specific purpose of full road easement right of way for a new rerouted placement of County Road nineteen through and over these parcels identified in the attached parcel map for an adjacent commensurate alternative location designated public right of way, road easement in more suitable location for safe public travel and reduce maintenance costs. Said acceptance of parcel map including the new road location to affect and adjust those parcels APM zero zero nine dash four eight zero dash zero one through APM zero zero nine dash four eight zero dash two nine. Said road identified in the parcel map will be the, a right of way for public and utility purposes and not to be accepted as a main county road at this time until this portion of road constructed to the county standards and presented to the county commission for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Travis, second by Lori. Any further discussion, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passion unanimous.
Greg, are you going to bring the parcel map for the commission signature?
Yes, I wanted to make sure that everything was approved, no changes, then I'll put it on Mylar, make sure Craig pays all the taxes, get everything in order, and then I'll bring it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Corey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're ahead of schedule, so we're going to go back to page five. Item B, which would be elected officials. And the first one is Mike Lebov, district attorney. Item A is discussion for possible action, approval of the resolution twenty twenty dash five seven, requesting Nevada Attorney General to review or changes and potentially prosecute DA case twenty twenty dash two five eight pursuant to NRS two two eight point one three zero and to reimburse the Nevada Attorney General in an amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I think we get about one of these a year on average. Which is pretty good considering we do over three hundred and five cases, so we can handle the house. Every once in a while though, we get a case that it's just too close to our staff and we can't wall it off to be able to do a prosecution that the people would look at and say is fair or not fair. So I, the procedure requires me to get a resolution approved to seek Attorney General prosecution. They have never charged us for a case in all the years we've been doing this, but it's, they're allowed to by statute, so I need to make sure it's included, so you know. And I just ask that you have a motion to approve it. I can't really discuss the case in public unfortunately.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passion unanimous. Item B, discussion for possible action, the ratification of an independent contractor agreement between White Pine County and Alma Healthcare Incorporated for services at a rate of five hundred dollars per hour for one hour per week for two months for a total compensation of four thousand dollars effective September eleventh, twenty twenty, for a two-month period.
This is the, the one for Dr. Dean to work as a consultant to help, do the transition and training up of the new public health official that is more approved, this is the contract itself.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passion unanimous. Item C, discussion for possible action, the ratification of an independent contractor agreement between White Pine County and Darren Coons, pharmacist D, for services as the public health officer at a rate of five thousand dollars per month during the declared COVID nineteen pandemic or when a public health emergency is declared due to COVID nineteen, whichever is shorter, and twelve thousand dollars per year thereafter, effective September eleventh, twenty twenty, until appointment is terminated or resigned.
This is the same situation, this is the contract we have and this, that was discussed and approved for, on those terms at the last meeting. So this is the ratification of the contract.
It's agenda for ratification, but Darren has still not come in and signed this. And I have it here for him if he signs it today when he shows up for his meetings.
Greg, but you still ratify it on our end, it's the county side.
I'll look for a motion to ratify it pending Darren's signature, how's that?
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passion unanimous. We're going to remain on page five. We're going to go to item C, department heads. Item one is Brett North, emergency, emergency medical director. Item A, discussion for possible action, the approval for White Pine County to contract with Dr. Dana Vitale to fill the position of White Pine County EMS medical director at a cost of twelve thousand dollars annually. Costs to be split equally with the city of E.
Does recently come up, Doc Chris, our current medical director, is planning on retiring here soon. So the city, I was unable to attend, do to be in quarantine once and somewhere on another interview for medical directors, but they've come up with one that's going to be good for the EMS services. They would want a participated training, be really involved in this EMS program. We didn't budget for this, we didn't realize he was going to retire when we budgeted. But it comes to light after the fact, so now we're going to be needing to get a medical director. I mean, Doc Chris decided to retire now, we'd be without a medical director for ambulance services.
So did Doc, Doc Chris, he didn't bill us before, did he bill the city?
So, so give you a little history on this. Doc Chris has been the medical director since the inception of the EMT program back in the seventies. He's the only medical director in the state of Nevada that did it for free. And it's partly because he's the one that initiated the program back in the day. Well, he is not going to renew his medical license, he's done at the end of this time when his license expires, he's not renewing it. However, he said if we can get somebody in place sooner than later would be better. So we did some interviews, we interviewed Dr. Rollins and Dr. Vitale. Dr. Rollins is actually the medical director for both our city fire department. However, with him, he said he's pretty much strapped for time, he didn't have a lot of time he dedicates to training, anything else. Dr. Vitale has expressed that he's willing to step in and help a lot of the ongoing training and everything else. He's supposed to zoom in, so if you have any questions for him, I can tell if he's up there, but if he zoomed in, then you guys can ask him anything. So he, he come to the agreement that he would do it for both entities for twelve thousand dollars, a thousand dollars a month. We figure if we split it, five hundred dollars a month for each entity. Right now, we're operating on the same protocols for city and county, we have them combined, so we operate on the exact same protocols. So he'd just be basically dealing, having to deal with one person instead of one entity having to get a medical director and the other entity he'd do it for both. So I think this is a super good deal that we can go forward with. I do have it on the city council agenda tomorrow for their portion. And like I say, if he's on there and you have any questions for him.
Dr. Vitale, are you on the phone?
I am, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you hear Pat Stork's presentation and Brett North's? Did you hear that?
I, I heard about the last fifty percent of it.
Okay, he kind of went into detail about your willingness to work for both the city, county and, and do both entities for the thousand dollars a month.
That's true.
And you, they interviewed another person, you were willing to step up. We're right now in the process of probably ratifying it. Do you have anything else to add? Will there be any other ongoing expenses?
Not, not that I'm aware of at this time, no.
Okay. Elizabeth, where would we find the funding?
I'll work with Brett, we'll have to move it around within the EMS department.
Okay.
The motion, the motion will be not to exceed six thousand dollars, it's going to be our portion, you know, Genesis twelve. And then Pat, could you brief him real quick on why, what this job is and what, how you guys use it?
So basically what the medical director does is he's the one who signed off on our protocols of how we operate the ambulances. It, we're basically operating under his license of the, the care that we do, the processes we're able to do, he signed off on it, that, you know, he kind of basically the, the guy we answer to, if we have anything we need to change or want to change in our protocol, we go to him first, get his approval before it goes to the state. We're, we're looking, I got on the agenda tomorrow to, we're actually trying to advance our ambulance service up to the paramedic level, where we do have one paramedic now and in hopes of down the road trying to get more onboard, so. His, his license is the one who signs off for all the narcotics and medications and stuff we do. So that's why you've got to have a medical director to run an EMS program.
Okay. And we've heard from Elizabeth how we can do the funding and, and from Pat as far as he's going to go to the city tomorrow. So on the direction, like the district attorney told us, if we make a motion for our share, which is six thousand dollars, not to exceed six thousand dollars, I would put that kind of motion, am I right? Okay, so any questions by anybody on Pat or Mr. Vitale, or Dr. Vitale? Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion to, to approve the, not to exceed six thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we do you real quick Lori, can we? Let's go, stay on page five. Item two, Lori Romero, library director, senior program administrator. Item A, is discussion for possible action, the approval to accept twenty twenty dash twenty seven LSTA information access funding in the amount of seven thousand sixty dollars. Library director's salary and in-kind services will be used for the seven hundred and, seven hundred and six dollars.
Okay, this is special funding that we were eligible for and it will be used to purchase a large smart TV screen for the wall behind you there for presentations, that'll be eighty, eighty-five inch, to match the wireless home system we have in the room going here. And a book sanitizer, we can get away from the bleach water for our materials. And so that's what this grant's for.
Any questions? For motion to approve?
Wait, 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 I do have a question.
Okay.
So this will be used for anything that the library does, basically? Because what I'm missing, hopefully before too long, will be moving over to someplace else.
Right, when the board installed this board, it wasn't used like it is today. We're getting more and more into presentations instead of the power, the projector on the screen. So to meet the library's needs and to the needs of the board right now, this is the concept they've decided to go with, a screen that being able to serve the whole room.
Absolutely.
When it comes time to make those department moves and set up the old courthouse to, it's going to be fun. But we'll look at some of those, some grass money, some fundings and have some plans for that large courtroom.
Okay.
The commission chambers, et cetera.
That's good.
Excellent.
Okay, motion to approve?
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passion unanimous. Item B, discussion for possible action, the approval to accept aging and disability services division grant number seventeen dash zero 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 dash zero seven dash HH one dash twenty-one for congregate meal services in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Tax override funds will be used for the match of one thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Okay, this is our usual division for aging funding for our meals. The only difference this year is they are only funding the first three quarters and then even the last quarter kind of seems where people at, they need to move funds around or whatever it may be. I am very confident that come the end of the third quarter, we're going to be able to work for our fourth quarter funds because we are meeting our needs. So like I say, this is for the first three quarters, start on October first.
Any questions by anyone on the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passion unanimous. Item C, discussion for possible action, the approval to accept aging and disability services division grant number seventeen dash zero 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 dash zero four dash two one dash two one for homebound meal services in the amount of thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Tax override funds will be used for the one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollar match.
Okay, once again, this is the same scenario, it's for the first three quarters. And once again, I have no doubt that we'll meet our need for the fourth quarter funding and, because our numbers are up. Right now, we're doing about sixty, sixty-five homebound daily and about fifty-five, sixty was on the bid chart through.
Motion to.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Lori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passion unanimous, thank you Lori.
Thank you.
So right now, we're going to take a quick five minute break and come back to the timed item at ten o'clock. How's that, is that okay? So we'll come back to page three. Item C is a ten o'clock timed item, so let's just take five minutes. Oh Sheriff, how are you?
Good, good. How are you? Good, good. What's going on, are you excited? It's always exciting, you know? Oh yeah, working in the middle of the freight line up there. So, yeah. Come and watch, it looks like so.
Sign that might be the Brownsville.
Just trying to mention Don't Worry Open. Those are the library people, I think.
It's a little bit anxious.
I don't think, no stick their badges.
This one sets them apart.
The Brownsville, they said they're near the end. What's that?
They're Brownsville people?
No.
They're at ten o'clock.
They're on now.
Those folks are not Brownsville.
Oh, apparently.
They're with another group and they're near the end.
Okay, well, we're going to go ahead and, you've hooked us up on the phone, am I?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, on page three, item ten, it's a timed item, it's the Rural Desert Southwest Brownsville Coalition, RDSBC. Item one is discussion for possible action, the approval of a letter of commitment from White Pine County to continue the county's participation as a longstanding member of the RDSBC and to support the mission of a US Environmental Protection Agency fiscal year twenty twenty-one Brownsville Assessment Coalition Grant, applicator for the RDSBC. Linda Drellinger, Assistant, Assistant County Manager for Knight County. Linda, are you on the phone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, I'm here, Marina of Knight County. I am, we are to present that Knight County will be applying for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Brownsville Assessment Coalition Grant and we are asking all of our existing coalition members to provide a letter of commitment to include with the application. And I believe the letter's in your back half.
Yep. Any questions by anybody on the commission? We've, we've read about sending the letter of commitment from White Pine County. Does anybody have a problem with that or is there any discussion as far as continue our, our participation? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passion unanimous, there you have it, we're on board.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, again, we're way ahead of schedule, so we have a ten thirty timed item. Let's see what we have, ten forty-five, about, about thirty.
What do you hope it's here for? We're at the end of the agenda, our Nevada Rural Housing Authority.
Well, that's what I was thinking, guys, right now. Can we do that? No. Yeah.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, I wish, I wish you could.
Because it has, it's under untimed.
It's untimed, Ian.
It's untimed, it's a lot on the agenda.
I mean, can you? Okay, let's do that. Let's go to page seven. We go to untimed items. Let's just go right through it and then we'll do, they just go right through it. So the first item under untimed items is discussion for possible action, the approval of a proclamation for red ribbon wheat of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Mary Kerner, E.L. Lodge, she does this every year. We can go ahead and look for a motion to proclaim red ribbon wheat for the week of October twenty-fifth.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Item B, is discussion for possible action, approval of the minutes from the county commission meeting held August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, and a special September second, twenty twenty meeting. Any additions, corrections, or subtractions? Hearing none, or for a motion to approve the case?
Motion to approve August twenty-sixth and the special September second meeting.
Motion by Lori?
Aye.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passion unanimous. Item C, item C is discussion update from the Nevada Rural Housing Authority on the work completed at the physical departments. Stacy Sepp, NRHA.
Stacy, are you here?
Yes, I am right here, I'm present. I do have a presentation, if we can play that?
Yeah. Yeah.